Commissioners, if you would turn your microphones on, please. We'll go ahead and get started. Welcome everyone to the Dawson County Board of Commissioners work session. Today's Thursday, March the 4th, 2021. We appreciate your attendance in person and those that are with us online as well. We'll get right into the new business. First up, we have presentation of a broadband-ready community ordinance. Polite Works Director David McKee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd love to tell you I'm gonna try to do this paperless to save trees, but I did not have time to print everything. So, but so broadband-ready community ordinance. We, I was actually presented this from Jamison, I believe, maybe perhaps Commissioner Gaines had approached staff about this ordinance. He passed it to me. For the sole purpose of this ordinance primarily and solely allows for permitting procedures and a policy for permitting broadband in the right of way. So that's, that's why it's, it's, it's made a little bit of background. In 2018, the state of Georgia developed a Georgia Broadband Development Initiative. And as anything else in government, it has an acronym. You'll see it is GBDI. This program was implemented for the purpose and the sole purpose of deploying broadband to all areas of Georgia. You'll recall just about every legislative session, there's the rural broadband. I had the opportunity to sit on an ACCG panel for broadband. One thing that I do want to make clear is this is not the House bill that was proposed that basically gave unadulterated access to the county right of way without permits or anything like that. What this primarily does and the designation of a broadband-ready community, I'm sorry, let me back up. It's regulated through the Department of Community Affairs. The Department of Community Affairs of the state is who regulates this broadband initiative. And they also regulate the broadband-ready community standards. There's an application process online. There are two essential items that are required for to be a broadband-ready community. Number one is it has to be addressed in your comp plan. We meet that requirement already. Number two is you have to adopt the state's model ordinance and in your packet I've attached a copy of the model ordinance. I have not filled anything in yet. If it's the desire of the board to move forward with this to public hearings, we'll plug in all the Dawson County information and then go to public hearing. But the designation of a broadband-ready community applies standards and adopts policy for permitting broadband infrastructure within the county right of way. And essentially what it does is it gives a single point of contact and it starts a shot clock. You've heard that term shot clock before permitting. So it starts a shot clock. So in Dawson County, what I would propose, if it's the board's desire, we would put perhaps Alexa Bruce, who is, who is our administrative assistant, put her single point of contact in this ordinance, her email address and her office number. So that if somebody wants to put broadband in the county right of way, they have one person to call and from the date they submit their permit, the shot clock starts and it's essentially a 10-day shot clock is what that is. We have 10 days to respond, not 10 days to approve it. We have 10 days to respond. And then there's, there's some language in there about going back and forth for the, to, to permit those items. So what I'll also tell you is that our general permitting procedures, whether it's broadband, perhaps a new subdivision, say gas line and new subdivision may take more than 10 days. We would always be able to provide comments. We meet the requirements of this ordinance today for all right away use permits. We have a policy in place to do that. There is also only seven communities in the state of Georgia that are certified broadband ready. I don't know the reason why somebody would or would not want to do it. I do know that there are grants that the communities can go after and federal funds if you are considered broadband ready. So I'll attempt to answer any questions. I'm not going to go line by line by the, the ordinance. It's a little short, very, very short page and a half ordinance, but that's the, the model ordinance. And again, where we've highlighted that in gray, we'll, we'll just plug in Dawson County and then the contact for our office specifically.
Questions for David?
And it won't be the mayor's name.
No, man, where it says mayor, it would be the, the chairman of the Board of Commissioners where it says mayor.
Yeah, I can, I can just give a little more color to what David's saying. I stumbled across this. I don't even remember where I saw it. It was like in the ACCG magazine or a Georgia magazine and in talking to staff, it sounds like we're already doing one of these things as he pointed out. So all this is certification that we're checking those boxes and it allows us more opportunities and lets us stand out. I think it'll also potentially help the development authority when they're trying to attract, you know, high type of technology companies and things like that. So.
I'm like you. I don't know why they, anybody wouldn't want to do.
I was shocked. Some of the, some of the larger communities may not be able to meet the 10-day shot clock requirement to review. And if you're not set up and you don't have that review process set up, then you, you have to set that up. Somebody has to review those permits. We have our ordinance requires it, my signature and then come to the county manager. We have a pretty, pretty quick, fluid process there. I misspoke a minute ago. There's actually 11 cities and counties total. I think I said seven, but there's a lot. That's not many. Yeah.
Other questions for David? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of alcohol ordinance update, planning and development. Robbie, you're gonna do that instead of Jamison?
Yes, sir, I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to come before you tonight and talk to you about the alcohol ordinance that our office and our county attorneys have been working diligently on for quite a while now. Basically, the purpose of tonight is to go over a few things. We're gonna talk about how this ordinance has evolved and what we have added and, and suggest a few more things that we see that you may want to include. Now apologize ahead of time. It's apparently allergy season all of a sudden. So, um, the alcohol ordinance has been reordered. The purpose of this is not only to accommodate the new wedding venue license requirements and issues, but it, it helps our staff rig through the ordinance easier, enforce it better. We, we've tried to be concise where we need to be concise and, and really make it a, a very pointed target that we can use and, and something that we can look at quickly and easily and figure out what we need to tell people. So bottom line, when somebody walks in the office, we want to be able to tell them quickly and precisely what is required of them. So we've tried to, to do that. You know, it was for a long time, this ordinance was the purview of one individual. We had a licensed administrator whose sole job was to administer this ordinance. Well, we don't have that anymore. As you know, times got tougher, things got leaner. You know, this got spread out to multiple people. So we want to be able to have any layperson, and I call it, I say that there are none of them lay, laypeople, but anybody that's not an expert in it to be able to pick it up and go with it and talk to somebody that comes in the door. There's two big reasons for updating agribusiness and brown bagging. This is to allow them to serve alcohol at the wedding venues. Like we've talked about the two options here was would be the agribusiness alcohol license, which allows for the business to hold a buy the drink license for beer and wine and/or the brown bagging, which allows the people that rent the venue to bring their own alcohol to it. And we'll go over that in some more detail in a minute. But I want to discuss first some decisions that we're asking y'all to, to make regarding some, some additional items for this ordinance. We, we want to know if you want to add these things. First of all, is variances. Section 6119 has been added this, and this allows for variances to be brought before you for certain conditions and we'll go over those in a little bit. Variances that still keep us in line with the state requirements, but allow us to be accommodating where we need to be accommodating. The second is the idea of curbside pickup for alcohol. Currently, our ordinance doesn't allow that. The state has recently changed the law to allow for curbside pickup from, say, a liquor store. And, and due to the COVID restrictions and everything, it's, it's a pretty good idea. So we'd like y'all to, to think about adding that option to allow for curbside pickup at certain, obviously certain venues. We have some significant procedural updates in the ordinance and I'd like to go over those now. I've given each of you a copy of what I'm going to be reading through. It's a tabbed copy of the ordinance, which has been copied from your agenda packet. So you'll see at the bottom of each page, you'll see two numbers. The first page where it says page and then a number is the page number from the actual ordinance and then the number in the box is the page number in your agenda package. So just so we're all following along and they're all tabbed. So if you'll turn with me to tab one. Now, tab one is section 65B. This particular section was removed. It removes a requirement for two separate certified checks. When obtaining an alcohol license, we, we historically have in the old ordinance required a check for the administrative fee and a check for the license. And they had to be certified bank checks, which is kind of ridiculous. Let's just put it all together and pay us one time. So we don't have to, to start asking, we don't have to ask for two checks anymore. Makes it easier for us to keep track of the money coming in. Makes it easier for the citizen as well in the business. So that is the first update on tab one. If you'll turn to, well, if you'll skip down to D, it's also highlighted. This section basically talks about renewals and if an individual is late. Currently, they have November 30th, they have to turn everything in. If they, if they're late, they have till the 31st of December. After that, if they don't turn it in by that point and they come in to renew, we charge them 50% additional fees and make them go through the whole process of coming back to see you guys again for a renewal that's late. So this is basically taking that out of the coming back to you, but it is leaving in the 50% upcharge on the renewal. So we think that'll make that a lot easier in processing these. We've had a lot that's had late issues because of COVID and everything. So we're trying to, to work with folks as best we can. And obviously they're not going to get a renewal whether they're early or late anyway, if they don't meet the, the ordinance requirements. We can, we can handle that in, in-house with staff. So want to take some burden off of you guys as well. If you'll turn with me to tab two. Tab two is looking to remove the requirement of having the registered agent be a citizen of Dawson County. Currently, the restaurant has to have a registered agent who is their proxy go-to legal person. Live inside the county, which works fine for a small mom and pop restaurant like the Blue Bicycle, for example, but when you're talking about Longhorns or Olive Garden, these corporate restaurants, they may be totally out of state with their corporate office and then they have to come, when they come to Dawsonville, they gotta search around for somebody to be the registered agent. So we feel that that's a bit burdensome and unnecessary and we'll still have all the appropriate contact information in order to take enforcement action or any administrative action that we need to take. So we'd like to remove that as well. Tab three. This is just a bit wordy and it's a lot of unnecessary gobbledygook. So we basically just condensed what's trying to be said here and presented it in a way that anyone in the office can speak to someone who comes in about it. And I won't go through reading that whole section, but that's basically the gist of, of tab number three. Going on to tab number four. This is where we're gonna need your thoughts and insight. This is our curbside pickup. Basically, it says online curbside pickup of malt beverages and wine as described in Rule 562332 of the Georgia Department of Revenue Alcohol Tax Unit Rules is prohibited in Dawson County. The commission has determined in its discretion that the practice is hereby disallowed by this chapter and an opinion provided force by said rule. And then B is off-premise delivery of malt beverages as described in OCGA, which is state code, is prohibited in Dawson County. So most of these basically are saying these are state permitted activities that we can either choose to allow here or we can continue to choose to not allow here. So we ask for your feedback on those two.
Can we do that? Angie, if it's a, do we not have to go by what the state?
You can, you can be more restrictive. You can be less restrictive.
Okay.
And this is, in essence, we're being more restrictive to the state.
Okay.
Robbie, I got a question. Yes, I guess. They'll still, I guess the person delivering it would have to be licensed through y'all, just like if they're serving it.
Yes, sir. There would, there would be some.
I mean, if you got a waiter, waitress serving you alcohol, they're licensed through y'all, right? They'd come get the picture taken out and stuff. So the person delivering it, will they have the same thing?
They would have to meet certain rules and requirements that we would set forth and when is in the state law as well. Yes.
I guess check ID when they get whatever they're delivering it to.
It's just, it's not the, the, the bag boy that would, hey, go take this to John Smith out there. It would be somebody that's licensed and knows what to look for as well. Yes. When they get to the residence so that we don't have them delivering to a bunch of teenagers.
Well, so I said it, so call a taxi to go to buy and buy you some alcohol, right? Which would happen.
Exactly, exactly. So there are some, some good things in the state law to, to help prevent those, those things. And obviously we'll, we'll include those in, in what we do here as far as the regular, regulation on the employee that's, that's handling that.
Does the, does the allowance of curbside pickup, does that allow for like drive-throughs? I've seen that in certain areas where there's traffic. Is that because of that particular component?
I can't speak entirely to that. I, I think that, that would really be an option for you guys and how much you want to allow it to be done or how you would want to allow it to be done, but I defer to the attorneys.
Yeah, you know, I think at this point, what would be most helpful is for you to identify what you're willing to do. And then we can kind of look at then appropriate parameters. Since it is approved, you know, conduct by the state will look to what the state restrictions are. And I would think mirror those largely, but you may want to even be more, you know, tight with those if you're not terribly comfortable with it. So I think if you, at this point, from my perspective and Robbie, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're really looking for just some, some guidance to say, here, go forth and, and approach it this way. And then we can bring you back sort of the details of how to do it. There are a couple areas that just were big question marks as to what you may or may not wish to allow in Dawson County.
And I don't think, I, I think I failed to get the note when we begin. We're just presenting this to you guys. We're still gonna have to have two public hearings, one before the planning commission and one before you, before we adopt anything, but we're wanting to get you this additional information out to you. So you can be thinking of, of those things and get it back to us. So we added in here. So we're by no means have to have a decision today or anything of that nature. So that is tab number four. Moving on to tab number five. This is just showing that we've moved the brown bagging section from section 6450 and it's, we're gonna cover that in a minute. That's what tab five is. Moving on to tab number six. Tab number six is covering catering and license requirements for caterers. Basically, the applicant shall hold a valid state license. The applicant shall hold a valid local county license as well. And that's for whatever their catering, whether it be beer, wine, distilled spirits, combination of the three. The applicant must be a licensed alcohol beverage caterer pursuant to the state law and the applicant must hold all required food service permits required by the county environmental health office, that's Bill Ringel's office. So that's a, the gist of, of what the catering portion requires of, of any applicant. Moving on to. Of of any applicant. Moving on to. Tab number nine, I'm going to skip to tab number nine really quick, because tab number nine is talking about variances. And again, we want to put this before you guys. Right now, our ordinance does not have any preclusion for variances. What we're suggesting is that you allow us to bring you. Of variances on three, for three different reasons. One, minimum distance requirements. We've all seen instances where. Somebody is just a hair too close as the crow flies, or so to speak, and you know, they're maybe. A hundred foot of industrial between them and the daycare. So we want to give you the, the, the ability to look at those logically and and reasonably and decide whether or not it would work. Secondly, requirements relating to the use of licensed servers to dispense and provide alcohol. This would be, for example, if someone had taps on tables or a beer wall, something like that. I know that's some new trendy things that people are doing. And basically, it would, you would have the option of allowing that at certain venues. The third is relating to service of food in conjunction with the service of alcohol, the minimum amounts of revenue for each. And this would cover, say, some, we had food trucks at some location in the county. You know, they do that in the city. But if we had that in the county and we had taco truck, a chicken truck and a beer truck. Are we going to allow that? A guy to have his beer truck, he's serving, he's selling the drinks for the other two? Or what portion will he have to have as far as food in that? Because there are just plain beer trucks and we will allow that or not. So that's, that's something that could come to you as a variance. We don't want to include that straight off. We want to give you all the case by case chance to look at that, if that makes sense. Going back to tab number seven. Tab number seven is agribusiness. And this is a sale of malt beverage and wine by the drink. As a, basically, the types of agribusiness establishments were permitted, the description of said agribusiness. That it is in. A RA zoning class that. The venue is, that is held out to the public for social celebratory or entertainment purposes. That they may be rented for a fee for those purposes. And ordinarily engages in agricultural activity and sells agricultural products during those venues. So that's a new section on agribusiness. And then lastly, if you'll turn to tab number. Eight. Covers brown bagging. And. We've highlighted that section. You, you're welcome to read through that or I can if you'd like, but basically, we're. We're proposing to allow brown bagging in certain instances with this ordinance. So that's a pretty well nuts and bolts of it. Hope I've been explanatory enough for you and. If I can answer any further questions, please let me know or contact Jameson. We'll be glad to help in any way we can to. Help you with the looking at those items that need some decisions. We're available for that.
Questions, questions for Robbie?
On section one at the bottom here, we're just talking about doing away with the requirement to come back before the board if they're late.
Yes, sir.
At what point is there a provision in here that says if you're. Late after a certain time, like if you're three months late, six months late, that you're, you have to reapply or is that? It's December thirty first.
Well, that's. That's current, current ordinance says that. As far as the new ordinance, I don't see. But we can't add that. If you want to say that's fine up until three months, six months, something like that, we can definitely add that to it.
That might be something to to look at, just where somebody's not. Out for a year and then decide to.
Exactly.
To renew.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I don't, why would somebody want to be late?
Some people don't like being early.
But I mean, I mean, it always seems like alcohol is so important to their business.
I agree.
And financially, revenue wise, and I just.
Again, like I say, a lot of it's been due to COVID and a long times. It's about like your driver's license. You don't think about it until, and it's very important, but you don't think about it. Exactly.
I just put mine in calendars, years and all that, because I know, you know, there's too much going on. There's no way you can remember all this.
You also have issues with, I guess, because you do have corporate who's nine states over. Somebody didn't get that done.
We do.
And so it winds up being late and they have to contact them and say, y'all, it's fired here.
Exactly.
And in the meantime, they're still operating?
They are.
Still, oh.
They are.
That's why there's no penalty for them to stop operating, apparently. That would get their attention a little quicker.
Yeah.
And that may have been the reasoning behind the, you have to come back before the board. If you don't within a, you know, after the thirty first. I will tell you that our, our code enforcement division is being very diligent in checking up on, on these. You know, we, we have Grayson going out there. He's talking to the business owners, making sure they're in compliance. And this part of it too is to make it easier for him to make sure they're in compliance and and not have an ordinance that even he can't understand. But there are provisions, enforcement provisions that are in place if they don't renew. This is more of an administrative provision for us in the office. If they're late, what do we do administratively? But yes, we can still take enforcement action if someone doesn't obey the ordinance as they're supposed to.
Is their license posted?
Yes, it's supposed to be posted, yes.
Looks like somebody would go by that all the time and say.
I would imagine that the fifty percent penalty gets their attention pretty fast.
Yes, it does.
And then at one point, we talked about when we were looking at the agribusinesses that. Let's just say a caterer or agribusiness, they're not open twenty, or not twenty-four hours a day, but they're not, they're not in the business of solely selling alcohol. It's, it's an ancillary product that they do. And so there was, I think I had some discussions early on. It is, is it the same license that they're required to buy? As a retail package store that it's in their sole business?
It is a different license category.
Okay.
I am not familiar enough with it to discuss that.
Okay.
Logically, but Jameson and I can definitely get back to you on.
Yeah.
How much different it is than the normal.
I just want to look and make sure, because I think it needs to be equitable that, you know, if you got a liquor store, they, they need a. I don't even know what the number is, say five thousand dollar license, but then you got a wedding venue that just serves alcohol, brown bag, or whatever it may be. They got to have, do they need a five thousand dollar license? They're not in that business.
And that is, yeah, we can show you that.
Just make sure that we're equitable with that.
Yes, we can definitely show you that equitability.
Okay, cool. And this has, this thing hasn't been updated in what, twenty something years?
Almost. It's been a while.
Yeah, so knocked the dust off of this one. Moonshine addressed in you.
You don't mention moonshine.
For Robbie.
Is moonshine really in there?
No.
No.
Other questions for Rob?
One, one more thing, and this is me just not knowing that much about it. The. Online curbside pickup, is that just for what y'all are looking for there? Is that just for like a liquor store or are you talking about for like a restaurant too?
Well.
For, for both.
It is for both. Cause, yeah.
And we allow that temporarily.
Well, we do, we allow them to reseal. If, if you're in there and you've drunk a half bottle of wine. And you want to take the rest home and finish it off, they have to reseal it. And so, yes, this would, anything that is sold curbside will, would have to be sealed, sealed to make sure that it's not open.
Other questions for Robbie? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Pleasure to be back in front of you.
Next up, we have presentation of drug and alcohol program manager policy update. Human Resources Director Brad Go, Brad.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. We've got two drug programs here in the county. One is. In line with our DOT handles. Or DOL, I'm sorry, for our county employees. On the other side of the fence, we have the. DOT and FTA that handles our, mostly our senior center and the bus drivers over there. And in the packet, it needs to be updated annually. It needs to be updated or biannually or as needed. And I'm before you tonight, it's an as-needed basis. To update this policy. Page one thirty-three in your packet is the page that needs to be updated. It's last page. In your packet, it's also the last page in the policy. The changes that we're making tonight, or we'd like to make, is basically just changing the name from the. Program manager from the prior HR director to myself. Medical review officer, substance abuse professional will stay the same. And then we're going to change. The certified laboratory primary specimen in the breath alcohol test facility to Keating Family Medicine. We had an audit today, actually, it's been going on for about two, two weeks. We wrapped it up today. It was a tabletop. Zoom meeting audit, if you will, that we passed with flying colors. The auditor is aware that this needs to be updated. She is aware that we're coming tonight. To present it and that it can be voted on as a later, at a later date. And she was okay with that. And I'm open for questions.
Questions for Brad?
Does this just apply to the senior citizen?
Correct, or transit bus drivers.
Okay, then apply to the employees.
This is a Department of Transportation thing, DOT.
Okay.
In the FTA, Transportation Administration.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
What other questions for Brad?
Brad, wow. Everybody on this. Is local except our medical review officer. Why is it out of Florida?
It's most likely the, the closest one we could find. They have to be qualified in certain areas. So our medical review officer for our regular DOL. Processing goes somewhere else. When all our testing with this program goes to an MRO, whether they're hot or what I call hot.
Right.
Or negative. The only ones on for DOL drug testing, the only ones we send out, if they're positive or. They could be positive. And they've got the system down. It used to take us a while to get those back. And we get, we get them back within three or four days.
Other questions for Brad? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of naming the main room of the Pauline Stevens Ivy Senior Center for Betty Ann Looper Bagley. Commissioner Fawcett is going to discuss that.
Yes, I'm telling you, I'm so stoked today because Monday I got to see the senior citizens building. And today, the fire station, I'm telling you, we've got things to be proud of, people. And like I said over there, I declare this a great day in Dawson County. I think that this would be most appropriate to name this main room, the dining room after Betty Ann. After all, and I hate to use this term, but it's a good analogy. A perfect storm happened so we could get this money. Miss Ivy unfortunately lost both of her children. And then when she, and then she had talked Betty Ann, who is her second cousin, to see if she would do something with her money. So it, and Betty Ann, of course, is a native of Dawson County. She loves Dawson County. She did a lot for Dawson County with this money, but she said she wanted to really do something for the senior citizens. And she did. So it's a beautiful, well, there's a plaque when you first walk in. But then there's this picture of Pauline and then there is a plaque underneath. But we want to do something for the main room. And I just think it's very appropriate because. Without Pauline, it wouldn't have happened, but without Betty Ann, it wouldn't have happened.
That's right.
So I think to recognize both would be fabulous. And I know we got a grant. I'm not taking a grant. For granted. Is that a pun? Anyway, I'm not taking that for granted, but. I just feel like this is just most appropriate. I think we should recognize Betty Ann for it. I want to honor her for this. And this is a gesture of gratitude and that people can come in and see that she had a part in this as well. So. That's my reasoning. And I don't know, Dawn's here. I don't know if you will add to that.
No, Ms. Fawcett and I have spoken. She was able to come out to tour the facility. And we're planning a ribbon cutting through within the next couple of weeks for her and Laura on that. So yes, I totally agree with that.
Yeah, can, can we move, and I've talked to people individually, can we move this forward?
We can.
And vote tonight. So is that okay?
Y'all good with that?
Okay.
And Sharon and I have talked about this too, and I'll just agree with her in reference to what she said. Miss Ivy did provide the revenue, but Miss Betty Ann decided.
She did.
And she made that decision, which made this possible. So, you know, giving her the recognition for her. Good deed to the citizens of this county with Miss Ivy's money, who she was entrusted with, is a good thing.
And Miss Ivy just specified three churches to get money. And then the rest, she said, the rest of it's up to you, Betty Ann. So that's how that happened. So it's, it's a wonderful thing.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Dawn. Thank you.
So we will move that forward to the voting session. All right, next up, county manager report, David.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners. As you know, we had a beautiful day today for the opening of Fire Station Eight. We are glad to have the project completed in order to better serve the area of the county. And to help lower some homeowners insurance rates. I'm sure that'll be coming out and and they'll enjoy that. We also will host a ribbon cutting for the new pavilion and multipurpose field at Veterans Memorial Park at twelve o'clock. And that's next Tuesday, March the ninth. So as Commissioner Fawcett mentioned, we've got a lot of things going on.
Is that the Bowen, what, what pavilion are you talking about?
Yeah.
The Bowen.
The, the new pavilion that was part of the senior center.
But the big.
That and the field, which were, was Fawcett.
Oh, okay, all right.
So this week, public work staff has started the annual L-MIG. For those who don't know what the L-MIG means, that's a local maintenance improvement grant, which is provided by the. By GDOT annually, in which they provide the county with a certain revenue stream in order to make improvements to some of the existing roads that we have. So that paving work was for twenty twenty-one. The L-MIG application was approved in November by the BOC. Staff also has repaired a few roads that needed heavy deep patching, which I name off. There's about eleven on here. Only the first phase of the work will be completed at this time, which includes milling and deep patching. And then they'll come back with top coat later on. So if you hear from. Like you've been asked a question.
Yes, no, no.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sure we'll have questions.
Once we do the deep patch and then they've come back with an overlay later on. So they'll have that taken care of. But this is J.C. Burt Road, which you've seen. Is, is done this week. Dawson Forest Marketplace, deep patch and, and also overlay, which all of these will be. Juno Road, Barker Road, Shadow Lane, Joel Slaton Road, Holt's Court, Fawcett's Lake Road, Brown Point, Antioch Church Road. Paved section of Goshen Church Road and Lake Circle. And Mr. McKee can speak further to some of these roads if you, if you wish. Also, human resources attended a ver. Also, Human Resources attended a virtual NFP, which is our broker dealer, which is the National Financial Partners, the Southeast Regional Summit on February the nineteenth. And NFP is the county's broker, as I mentioned, for for the health benefits. So we had a meeting with them the other day to begin the the health process that will be coming before you later on. Also, your county clerk, Kristen Cloud, has completed the Georgia Clerk's Education Institute Certificate Program, earning her state certification. The certificate is a one hundred and one hour program of fruity classes developed in cooperation with the University of Georgia Carl Vincent Institute of Government, the Georgia County Clerk's Association and the Georgia Municipal Clerk's Association, I recognize. So we want you know, congratulate her on that. Lunch breaks and after hour.
Wonderful.
Doing that. So good job. And that concludes my report. If you've got any questions for me, be glad to answer for you.
Questions for the county manager.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. County attorney report.
No, sir, I do not have a public report, but I do have an item for executive session concerning pending litigation.
Okay, we'll do that after the the voting session. All right, that's all we have for this work session. We'll take a few minutes to prepare for our voting session and then we will be back. Thank you for your attendance and thank you for those that are online. Please stay with us for the voting session. We'll be back in just a few minutes. We're, thank you.